So we'll call this meeting to order, Ms. Uh, thank you, everybody for joining us. It is Friday, October 18th, 2024, 1:00 PM. Again, good afternoon. Thanks for joining us, to my board colleagues, um, to our administrative leadership team, Dr. Campbell, Mr. Lilly, um, and everyone else, all other staff, uh, Ms. Walker, everyone else that's on the, the call today. Um, thanks for joining us, um, and, uh, we'll go ahead and read our board norms and protocols like we do at every meeting. We agree to respect differences of opinions in making decisions for the district, to follow best practices in managing the superintendent and management of the board itself, to stay on task when conducting business for the district, including while at board meetings, to never surprise a superintendent or each other when conducting official business of the district, to read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting and at board workshops as a reminder of how to conduct our meetings and continually self-check to determine if we're following our norms when conducting district business. Again, welcome, everybody. Thanks for joining us, um, for, for this Friday afternoon. It's a beautiful Friday afternoon. Hopefully you've had a chance to get outside, um, and enjoy the fresh air. So with that, Ms. Smith, would you please do a roll call?
Yolanda Clark. Yolanda Clark.
Can you hear me? Okay, um, Maxine Drew. Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, present.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., present.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, present.
Rachel Russell. Dr. Win. Thank you.
Okay, we do have a quorum, so we'll go ahead and continue on with our agenda and our meeting, or our meeting. Um, next, entertain a motion, and I know Ms. Clark's here, um, I see her and she can, we can't hear you, Ms. Clark, but we can see you. So if you need to, we can try to help you figure out your audio.
Is this better?
Yes.
There you go.
Perfect. I don't know why it defaults. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, um, may I have a motion to approve today's special agenda?
So, so moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Did any questions? Hearing none. Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew. Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, so Board, um, we're gonna jump right into our agenda, and I don't think we'll use the entire hour and a half, but we certainly have it if we need it. Um, Dr. Stubblefield is unable to join us today, but we've got our other fearless leaders, Dr. Campbell and Mr. Lilly and Ms. Kaiser, and the rest of the gang here to help us walk through today's agenda. Um, today, Board, is our, one of our budget meetings. As you know, we're meeting to talk about our budget, just to make sure we're, um, on pace with, uh, getting our budget for next year. The, we've got two agenda items, um, to, to discuss. The first one, um, Board, if you recall, we had approved this, uh, budget consideration and impact statement template that each department, um, is filling out, completing, as kind of like a baseline for this year, um, so that moving forward, we have a baseline of where every department was this year with their budget considerations, what they were, um, cutting, or if they were changing their budget a bit. Um, and from what I understand, those budget considerations, um, were due today or are due today. So they're trickling in. I don't know that staff have all of them quite yet, um, but, um, I know they're working through them. So what I thought we could do today, we won't go through the ones that we have yet, since staff really haven't had a time to digest them yet either. Um, but what I, what I thought would be good or helpful for us is if, uh, Mr. Lilly or, or Ms. Kaiser, I don't know who's, who's gonna do this part, but maybe just show the template on the screen again, so that the Board can see it and, um, just kind of get a glance and remind us of what we're looking at or what you're receiving today. Um, and then, once all of those templates or department budget considerations are received by staff, my understanding is you'll put them in the board library, um, where the Board will then have access to those, um, budget considerations from each department. We'll be able to review them, and we'll set some time aside at the next budget meeting, um, to kind of review those and answer any questions that board members might have on those department budget considerations that came in. But for today's purposes, um, really just kind of reviewing the template as a refresher for the Board to, for us to know what we're gonna be looking at. Um, and if you could just highlight anything that you think we should really be paying attention to. So I'll pause there, um, Mr. Lilly.
Mr. Lopez.
Yes.
I know you said they were due today. When's the final cutoff date for them to have them in? Was that established? You said today. We didn't get them all in. So when's the final cutoff date?
Well, I think it's the end of today is, they have through the end of today. So that's why I said we have some that have trickled in already, but, uh, all the departments have through the end of the day, um, today. So they should be, all be in by close of business today. I'm looking at Mr. Lilly, Ms. Kaiser, they're both nodding their head. So, um, so to Ms. Page to answer your question, it's end of today is when they'll let them in.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So, Mr. Lilly or Ms. Kaiser, I'll let you jump right in with the, the template and just maybe give us a refresher course on what we're looking at and, and what you'll be putting in the board docs and, and kind of a timeline of when, when you think that'll happen, maybe.
Sure, I'd be more than glad to, to take that. Um, if I'm able to present, let me get it here. Sorry, I'm not finding the right one. Okay, so this is just the, the template we, um, are using, excuse me. At the last board meeting, I did submit the, um, one for the finance department, so you can kind of see a preview of what that looks like, and I believe Leslie might have attached it to this board meeting also. Um, it might be in the, um, the board library. But either way, um, this is just kind of the information we're asking for. You know, just the preliminary, what is your department, what fund is being impacted, and then asking them to respond if it's an addition, a reduction, what has changed, and then going through, talking about what programs or pa- practices will be impacted, and then, um, if it, if there's any impact to human resources, and then also to students, so.
Can you make that a little bit bigger, please?
You bet.
And I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. I am sorry, I'm struggling with this here. Is that better?
Little bit, still kind of hard to see, but you said it was sent us today?
Um, it is in the library. Uh, I believe Leslie attached it to, um, to the agenda as well.
Yeah, it's under, Ms. Page, it's, uh, Ms. Brownlee Page, it's under executive contact or any content or any other board members who need to access it.
Okay.
It's under executive content. Uh, you'll see there's two documents. One is the finance budget, which they've already submitted. Um, uh, and then the budget template, which is the blank one, um, which we're looking at. So you should be able to access it there.
Thank you.
So, yes, we will have, um, those submitted today, and then, um, early next week, I would like to take a little time to review them and make sure that, um, everybody understood and that we're all on the same page, and then we'll be able to add them to the library. So they will definitely be there by the middle of next week, and then you guys would have time to review them or, um, discuss them at the next, uh, special budget meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Kaiser. So, um, so this will be, this will serve as a baseline here. Every department will fill one of these out and submit it by close of business today. Um, and again, timeline, let's just say end of next week. The, on or before the end of next week, you'll have these in board docs. That'll give you all some time just to clean everything up in case we need to, um, and the Board will then have access to review these. Um, Board, what, what I'm suggesting is that at our next finance, or in our next special budget meeting in November, um, we could set some time to, um, have a conversation on these or kind of lift up anything that we need to or ask any questions around these. So, anything else, Ms. Kaiser, that you think just, um, we should really, you know, since this is the first year we're using this document, that we should kind of be paying attention to? And then, Ms. Russell, I see your hand up.
Yes, I will just say that I, I really think that this is a good starting point. We've put some things in there to consider. You know, sometimes when you're changing your budget, um, this is asking, you know, is there transportation that's gonna be, you know, impacted? Or anything, you know, as far as the buildings, if you're, you know, moving classrooms or whatever. So I, I really think this really helps the department leaders think through, um, some of those things that, that might also be impacted. So I, I, I feel good about the, um, layout of it and that I think we'll get some good information from it.
Thank you. Ms. Russell?
So I just wanted to recognize that I was, A, here, um, and I wanted to offer my apologies, um, because the question I asked may have already been answered, but maybe has not. Um, so this is the template form. Everyone's completing this form. This is the template. This, and the way it currently is, is how it will be shared with us. There isn't like a consolidated way to share it. And I guess as a person who doesn't want to feel like I have to open up 12 different documents, I have a little bit of pause and concern about the current format being the way in which the information is then shared with us. And I think, yeah, I'll leave it at that for now.
Would it be helpful if we put it all in one document? I, I don't know that.
So I'm thinking more of the way in which, like, the building needs assessment, assessments, that we see it in a Excel document for all of the buildings. Um, I'm thinking that that would be a easier format when deciphering between department, from one department to another. Not that I'm saying that's how we would do something, but just looking like all of the reduction in budgets, people are saying, impact this area. Um, more of a way of like the comparative, while we want to look at them both as individual departments, also looking at it from a overall, um, process, would just be kind of the two places I would kind of want to look at this when making decisions around it, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, that, that's a really good suggestion. Yes, we can definitely, um, just copy it into that format, so that way you'd be able to see all the departments, the amounts, and then we would just probably have a column for each one. Um, it would be a little hard probably to print if we're doing it that way, but, um, we'll also have the PDFs of all of them as well, so, yes.
Yeah, and since, and I'm just gonna throw this out here, because I use Google Forms for some documents, because that is the choice of the district, um, to use Google now. Maybe potentially in the future, creating a Google Form, so you're not having to copy and paste, is a, um, suggestion for how you can see both the data individually, but also, um, you can see it all together. So, just, just a suggestion.
Yes, and we actually, these are Google Forms that, that everybody's completing. I would have to copy it into like an Excel document if we wanted to be able to see column by column, um, which we can sure do, and.
Well, in Google Forms, if you click the spreadsheet button, it would actually do it for you, so.
I will learn and definitely take, take that advice. I appreciate that.
Just holler, we can talk about it offline, but holler at me if you need any assistance.
Yeah, and I, I know there's some preferences between different board members on, you know, if you want access to the Google Forms or if you want it in the library. So we, we can provide that in both, both formats. So thank you for that advice. I appreciate it.
It's a great suggestion, Ms. Russell. I, I think having both the, and, and I think combining them into one document could be helpful, but, so having access to the form for each department, so we can kind of see the raw, like, here's what was submitted. Um, but I think as Tracy, as you, and, and Steve, Dr. Campbell, and, and the rest of the team kind of work through it, whether it's an Excel spreadsheet or some kind of form that's able to kind of show impact, um, kind of get a big picture view of, of this, I think, as you all are working through it, as Ms. Russell suggested, I think that's a great. And I don't think that has to be completed by next Friday necessarily, um, but while you guys are, unless the Board, you know, says you have to, but, uh, but as you're working.
No, I totally meant for that to be done next Friday. No, I wish, uh, yes, I was just suggesting that, moving forward, yes. Whatever you all decided before for next Friday, because if I understand this is for what has already happened, I think moving forward as we head into next year, that was what, that was more or less where I was forward-thinking, so.
Got you. No, but I think if you, if there's something you could do this year that kind of also shows, uh, you know, I think you and the team can work through that, and we're here to help provide some guidance. So, um, well, I'm sure we'll give you feedback as we see it, so. Board, other questions on this document?
Yeah, Mr. Lopez, now, I'm not asking them to give it to us tonight, but just can we get it back in a timely manner to read it? That's what I'm concerned about. So if the next meeting is November, we need to have enough time to read everything and to make assessments. So if we could just get it back in a timely manner, that would be much appreciated.
Yes, absolutely, and I think the goal, um, is gonna be no later than next Friday, um, to have all of these forms updated in board docs and, um, available for the Board. Uh, Ms. Kaiser said by midweek next week, um, but I think, you know, just by next Fri- the end of next week. So I, I think you're right, and that'll give us, um, I think sufficient time if we get it in by then, so, but absolutely. Thank you, Ms. Page. Other questions or thoughts on this, the template, board members?
I do have a question, Mr. Lopez. I think, Ms. Kaiser, I'm curious about, I think I heard you say that you would send out, you had some thoughts or recommendations. I'm curious about how staff receive when you ask people to do things. It's different versus when you have an idea, so, um, did things go okay? That, okay. Okay, any feedback that you know about?
No, I have, I have not received any feedback, um, positive or negative. Everybody's just been, um, filling them out and, um, understanding that, you know, we've given them, gosh, it's been maybe almost six weeks, four weeks plus, um, to do this, and, um, I've, I've not heard any feedback either way. I think just, from my personal opinion, it is a, um, a good way to, for me to think through all the different, um, departments and different things that might be impacted as well. So it helped me going through my own budget in that aspect, um, but I, I have not had anybody that has said that they didn't find it useful or anything like that, so.
Okay, and that's fine. It's one thing when you have an idea about something versus when it's boots to the ground. Um, and so I have my own budget process, so I was just curious about how this one went.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Any other thoughts? Okay, well, um, again, just to kind of remind everyone, um, so this, this is being, these forms are being completed and submitted by all departments. Each department is submitting one, uh, no later than the end of today. So we'll have them all by the end of today, and then, uh, Ms. Kaiser and her team will have all of these forms available, um, in board docs, um, no later than next Friday, the 25th, October 25th. So, Board, you should have, um, and Leslie, if you could just send us a quick ping, um, you know, to let the Board know that, hey, they're available, here's where they are, um, so that we can, um, we can have, so we know to look for them or where to look for them. Thank you. Okay, um, if there are no other questions on that item, we'll move on to, um, item 2B, budget planning. Um, Board, to this portion of our conversation, really is just to kind of give us an overview of where we're, where we're heading in our budget conversation for next year. Um, you, you know, the intent of starting these conversations in September, October is so that we're giving ourselves plenty of time, um, to do the legwork that's necessary, so that next summer, when we're, you know, getting our draft budget and, and getting towards budget approval, um, we've had sufficient time to work through, um, the, the steps of, of getting to that final budget. So, um, what my understanding is, and, and I'm, I'm gonna look at Tracy and Steve, um, Dr. Campbell, maybe to help kind of with this next step, but, um, my understanding is, for the purposes of today's conversation, there's still a lot of, uh, unknowns for next year, so we really can't bring any, um, specific data. But what we do wanna, wanna let the Board know is that early 2025, um, the intent i- is to bring to the, bring forward to the Board different scenarios, just like we did for this, this budget, um, of where we, what we would like to see our budget, um, specifically three scenarios at least. Um, one, if we are staying revenue neutral, um, one, if we are exceeding revenue neutral, um, and then if we're exceeding but not to the fullest, um, those are kind of some scenarios that we'll be looking at, and that's what the, the, the staff is gonna bring to us. Um, I believe January 2025, um, just kind of some preliminary information. Um, but I'll kind of pause and see if Mr. Lilly, Ms. Ms. Kaiser, um, can kind of help guide, um, or correct me if I'm wrong, if I've misstated anything.
No, no corrections. Uh, one thing that I want to point out, um, just as we are trying to do this earlier, and I think that's a good thing and a good practice, but the earlier the start, the more hypotheticals you have as well, because we won't have as many hard numbers as, as a result. Um, and, you know, some of the things, you've already kind of mentioned it, but, uh, we would provide three scenarios to the Board. We would do, uh, not exceeding the revenue neutral rate, um, which that would mean we'd be working on the same assessed valuation for the 25, 26 year as we are for the 24, 25. There, there would be no budget changes other than base state aid increase or an enrollment increase or decrease that would, that would impact the budget, right? Um, we would also look at exceeding the revenue neutral rate, but reducing by a percentage or a mil or, you know, whatever. We would need Board direction on that further down the road as to how you would want us to develop that, what rate, um, you know, what kind of reduction we would be looking at. And then the third scenario would be just, uh, based off of the assessed valuation and exceeding the revenue neutral rate. Um, if we did that, we would more than likely, and that's Board authority, but, uh, maintain a flat mil rate. Um, some of the things that's important to know is the assessed valuation that we will actually be using for 25, 26 does not come out till June. Uh, I think Tracy and I were talking about it earlier. I think actually we received it July 1 of this past fiscal year, so, um, you know, that's, that's why I'm saying we are gonna be dealing in some, uh, some hypothetical, and we're gonna have to, uh, you know, understand that going in. Um, we provide the best estimate of what we feel like assessed valuation would be for the 25, 26 year, and as we get further down the line, I think those estimates become stronger or better estimates. Uh, you know, the other thing that I wanna just kind of touch base on is we've lived in now kind of historical times for assessed valuations the last few years. Um, I think that over the last three years, the lowest has been almost a, I, I think it was an eight percent increase to the assessed valuation, but that's, that's not the way that it always is either, and we all need to be aware of that. Um, you know, when I started in administration, from year to year, we didn't know if the assessed valuation would go up, remain the same, or go down. And, you know, just because we're living in this time where the last three years it's increased significant amounts is not, uh, not a guarantee that that happens this year or the year after that or anything as well. And I just, you know, sometimes we lose sight of that just because we have been in this, this cycle the last few years, and I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention as well.
Great, thank you, Mr. Lilly. Uh, Board, I'll open the floor for any questions or, um, discussion on what you just heard. And, and in terms of next steps, and I think anything that, that Board members that you think would be helpful for, for, for us as a Board to have any information that you'd like to, to ask, um, that we also consider or get information on as we're, um, working through the budget for the next year. So if there are some pieces that you feel would be important for us to, as we make our best informed decisions, um, I think we can talk through that with staff as well. So, any thoughts, questions from Board members?
So, Mr. President, I have a question. Uh, if, uh, when do we have to? I know we talked about 25, 26 school year. When is it, when is the deadline? When does, uh, when do we have to, uh, uh, this has to be completed through a vote, that what, we're going to say yea or nay through this revenue neutral?
Thank you, Ms. Marlin. Um, Ms. Kaiser, please.
Yes, yeah, so we will, um, through the spring, we meet with all the departments and the schools and, and get their budgets, and so we can provide, um, that recommendation to the Board on what those would look like. Um, where really, excuse me, gets into a crunch time is when we don't get the assessed valuation until mid to end of June. And then if we're not exceeding, um, we would have to submit it in the newspaper prior to August 10th, probably. So we're, I mean, on about a four to six week timeline, um, where we have some really firm numbers that we're able to share with the Board. And so that is where, um, you know, it, it feels really rushed at that point, but that, but that's the only time that we actually get the, the true numbers. So it is anywhere, we have to submit the budget to the state anywhere between October, um, so from August to October, depending on, on the revenue neutral rate.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Russell.
Yeah, I think I have a couple of things. So I think we need a definitive timeline for when we will actually get the options back, because I believe two meetings ago, we talked about it being in November, and now you're saying the beginning of January. And I think where I'm just trying to put all the pieces together is that there are things that this Board will not be able to control, um, especially when it comes to salaries or contracts and, um, to respect the voices of those that have spoken before about how sometimes it feels like we get hamstrung and to, we get too far out, and if we're gonna give, if we're gonna take jobs away or we're going to make reductions, and that's not ever our intent, um, that we get to a place where it's like, that's not giving people enough time, um, to consider those options. And so, January, January, we wouldn't even be ready to have that conversation if we're just getting what the options are. And so that would probably push us to like March or April to even be considering reductions. And so I'm just, so I just want to make sure that, like, we have a clear plan ahead, and I think things that we can't control, like we're coming out of a negotiated agreement contract and what that looks like, until we know what that looks like, we won't know how that'll impact our budget. We have the classified salaries. I feel like I have an estimate of what the number it said it would cost us every year, but like those pieces, I feel like. I feel like I have an estimate of what the number it said it would cost us every year, but like those pieces, I feel like we can put in there to hopefully be able to have that conversation sooner. I just get worried about us waiting until January to start that conversation. It's halfway through the year. If reductions are going to be a conversation we need to have to reach whatever goal that the entire board comes to, I would at least want to give folks some time to look at that. And so I think that's where I'm just like trying to figure out the timing, their expectations. And kind of just making sure that it doesn't feel like we're hamstringing. I feel like us starting early is a good start. But I'm also just concerned about, we haven't done this before. So how do we make sure that, yes, by this time we have this, by this time that we have those established goals so that no one does feel like we just went too far down the path without having. Yeah. So, thank you. That's all I had to say.
Uh, Mr. Lopez, now, correct me if I'm wrong. I'm, we're starting early on some things, but we officially, I thought, couldn't start till January.
So both, I think to both Ms. Russell, Ms. Page, I mean, I think I think you're and I'm looking at Tracy and Steve, maybe if you could help with with this a bit in terms of what the timeline actually might look like. And totally here, Ms. Russell, I, I mean, those unknowns, those things that we can't control, I think that's, that's kind of what puts this process in a little bit of a question mark in how we proceed. But Tracy, Steve, can you maybe give some some feedback on both Ms. Russell and Ms. Page's questions or or comments?
I'd be more than glad to. Just some of the things that that we're talking about the unknowns. You know, for example, we did submit the SO66, which is the superintendent's organizational report. That's kind of our preliminary September 20th numbers. And with that, it is unaudited at that point, obviously. We were up 152 student FTE. Our kindergarten class was 200 students larger than it was prior year. So so that was a good thing. We've got some some large young classes coming up that will definitely help our enrollment, you know, if that stays. We did process more household economic forms this year to find free lunch students. That does not mean they all qualify for free lunch, but we did process more forms this year. So that was good. Our September 20th audit will be in mid-November. And so we will get those results back beginning of December timeline. And so that's really when we'll have some more firm information, at least on our enrollment and our waitings and and what that looks like. Right now, for the increase in base state aid, that is based off the Consumer Price Index. So we do have an estimate of what new money we might be receiving, but we won't know that official number until April. But once we get the audit in December, that really is a is a lot closer for us to be able to give some realistic information. Title allocations don't usually come out until summer, but in the spring we get some preliminary numbers. And just to remind you that that is proportionate. So if other districts have a higher increase in title students than we do, we could still receive less. So that's always, you know, and our our district receives a lot of lot of title funding. So those are just some of the the unknowns. I'll let Steve jump in about when we can present information to the board. If if we're doing hypothetical scenarios, I don't think there'd be any problem with us getting a little bit sooner, but probably the reason maybe January hits your hits your mind is because that is after we can receive the audit and we do have some more definitive numbers. But Steve, I'll let you add anything you'd like.
No, I don't think there's anything that says you can't start early or, you know, have these kind of discussions. But I think the biggest thing that that we wanted to point out on this is, you know, what I've already said, the earlier we start, the more hypothetical we're talking to, right? Doesn't mean that we shouldn't be talking now, doesn't mean that we shouldn't be working on these things now, but you know, as of October 18th, we don't have hard numbers for, you know, our FTE, we don't have hard numbers for what assessed valuation is going to look like. We don't have hard numbers on what our title money might look like. We can, we can kind of, you know, we've got some guidelines. We've got some ideas based off of historical data. But what we would be using right now is historical data, and I want to make that very clear, because I don't want to get down this process and, well, you gave us these numbers and no, that's, that's not it. Well, it's because we're, we're playing a little bit of a guessing game right now. And and that's okay. I think it does stimulate discussion. I think it does, you know, help solidify a direction that we want to go. But we just all need to be aware of the earlier we start, the the less accurate or less true our information is going to be.
Uh, Mr. Lopez, and thank you, Mr. Lilly. I think we got that. And I I don't know about anybody else, but I I think I can figure out that everything is an estimate and we're not dealing with exact numbers. Will we have a conversation with the UG and the college? Because I think that's important, because we're getting a lot of pushback from taxpayers about different things, and you have to consider that. I understand what we're trying to do, but you also have to consider who's paying for this. And and make sure we look at what they're doing, because what they do has a tremendous impact on us. So do we have those kind of conversations, at least to see what they're doing?
Um, we do have conversations with UG and the community college. We haven't had those kind of, at least, I should say, I haven't had those formal type of conversations. That is something that we can we can look into. We can try to, you know, gain a better idea of what their plans are. You know, they will be in the same boat as we are this early in the process. It's going to be hypotheticals that that they would be using as well. And I don't know when they typically start their budget process, those kind of things as well. They might not even be in the the hypothetical discussions about what 2526 looks like yet. But I can certainly reach out and try to, try to engage in some of those discussions too, or our staff can.
And and I appreciate that, because I think we, a lot of what's done affects us. And and again, I think we have to, because I don't know how the vote's going to go in November. But all of that is going to have a bearing in how we operate. And we have to be honest and be realistic about it. You know, right now, just from conversation, it looks 50/50ish. So I'm not sure how it's going to play out. But we do have to consider all of that as we plan.
Sure.
Think we need to have, I don't know what they're doing, how soon they get started, but I think we need to kind of get a feel. What are they thinking? Because so much of it affects us.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Brownlee Page. Yeah, so I think, and and they're on the same timeline in terms of when they have to have a final budget kind of or commission when they vote, is that right? See you, not and Steve, Tracy, okay.
Mr. Lopez, I can jump in on that one real quick. We won't start that process for the college until probably May. We we kind of wait until we get those finalized valuation numbers and really can work with the hard numbers. So as far as coordinating between taxing entities, you know, what the college they do versus others, I don't know that there's a lot of will for board members to to mingle that between entities, but we're certainly willing to have conversations if if it's requested later on.
And I respect that and understand that, but they're using that in the public against us, because they're saying, and I, and they may or they may not share, I don't know. But I just think we need to kind of get a feel what's, what are they thinking about? Because too much of it is used against us. And I'm sorry, Dr. Mylan.
No, that's all right. I was way, I'm I'm patient. Much discussions on this, and it had, and I think it needs to be. Well, let's let me go straight to the point. We, I appreciate you, Mr. Lilly, for speaking about the practice and maybe maybe the policy about the starting there. I'm like this, the earlier we start, the better for discussion. And in line with Ms. Russell and Ms. Page is saying that it it keeps us handcuffed when we, when we don't want to be going through this guessing, hypothetical, unanswered, and it puts us underneath the umbrella that we got, we want to do things that make sense, that is reasonable and relevant, because we don't want to make a decision on down the line and say, well, this is, this is added, this was not inclusive. It was not, we got to, we got to proceed, proceed even further on down the line, because because we don't have all the information from all the categories, all the departments, of the expenses and all that. So earlier is always better. And in line with Ms. Ms. Page is saying oftentimes it create in the, from the community aspect, it keeps us strapped and handcuffed when some are going this way, some are going that way, and it seems like we're not there. The understanding is not, is not there on on the expenses, what's it going to cost, and what direction we're we're going. So I just want to say that that it keeps us handcuffed and strapped when we got to make a decision so quickly and we're tied into meeting a deadline. But it's hard, if there's a deadline there, we don't have all the information that's very, very important on down the line that's going to be effective and effective. It creates, it creates a situation of uneasiness. And I understand that it's, it's not under you all's total control, because we working with different entities and different departments. But it doesn't, it doesn't make our task no easier when we got the vote to say, hey, we don't go this way. We're not going to go that way because of these reasons, when we don't have all the facts and we need to be inclusive. That's where I'm at.
Thank you, Mr. Mylan, Ms. Brownlee Page. So, Mr. Lilly, Ms. Kaiser, I'm I'm curious, you know, based on the conversation that we had today, I wonder, and since, you know, we've got a couple of people that were missing or maybe didn't catch all that, I wonder, how how would you be able to create? And it might be good for us just to have like a draft timeline, kind of based on what you've talked about today, right? Historically, what the budgets look like, and maybe some of those milestones that you you mentioned in terms of what information we get when? When do we get real, you know, the assessed valuation, all of that, just, just visually, so we could, so the board can see it. And it might just continue to help us so we're not kind of revisiting, well, when do we get this? Or when do we have to do? So so that we can see it. And you could, you know, base it off of, you know, what we've done historically, but also, and when we get information historically, but also what you know, and and that might just help guide our conversation moving forward. I don't, and that's just, that's just my my opinion. I don't know if other board members might find that helpful to see kind of a visual draft timeline for for the budget, for when we have to get to, you know, put it in the paper and and actually take a vote on that. If I'm the only one, then they'll do it.
Mr. President, I'm, that's the ballpark I'm in.
I could agree with that as well. Timelines are right.
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's, that's good.
Makes sense.
And and I, you know, and I, I think it also helps us, you know, as we're thinking about the different taxing entities and decisions that we're making, I mean, I think, you know, please have those conversations, Mr. Lilly, Ms. Kaiser, whoever in the department needs to, just just to kind of get a sense. But I also, you know, I also know we all have different, different needs and different audiences and different, you know, we, we, we've got to work through the state aid and that that we get for that, whereas others don't get that. And and you, you know, so there are different factors. So I think when we look at the totality of the picture of the budget and what goes into it, but also the potential losses and the impacts that that has, I think that's just another data point for us to consider when we get to to making decisions on where we want to go. But I think having an understanding of where, as best we can. You know, having those conversations with other taxing entities, I think is helpful. Other thoughts or questions for for staff around the the budget process? Anything else that board members you think would be helpful to keep in mind or information that would be helpful for us?
I appreciate this discussion on this, because it's a learning experience for me, I know for others as well, for me, to see what, because this is, this is very important to us and our community.
Hey, if there's nothing else on this particular topic, and I know we'll, we'll keep revisiting this, but yeah, if you could get us a draft timeline and, you know, kind of work through that and and get with Dr. Stubblefield and just kind of, you know, get us something. And maybe we can take a look at it at the next budget meeting. But if you can get something. Yes, Ms. Russell.
Sorry. Within that timeline, those variables that we can't control, can we make sure that the timeline includes when we tentatively would have that information, like the estimated increase in insurance? I don't know when that's actually received. I know the, some of the contract pieces are on us as a board, but like maybe just the historical background, this is usually completed by blah, 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 just so that when we're planning and looking at the timeline, we can kind of, I'm trying to find the right word that I'm trying to use, but that we can kind of look through those, like, hey, at this meeting, we might be deciding or thinking about this, but we may not have all of the pieces. Yeah, let me think through how I want to describe that. But Tracy, you nodded your head. So I think you know a little bit of the variables that I'm talking about. But if I can find the words, I will.
I think we do have a pretty good idea of the variables. And what I, what I think that we can do is put a kind of a master budgeting schedule together and, you know, share it. And some of it, even that is not going to be, you know, there's not a specific date that we get our audited enrollment, you know, those kind of things. But we can give you kind of a general guideline that I think will, you know, kind of solidify the process.
Thank you. And Ms. Russell, as you fleshed that out a bit more, if there's some some additional pieces you're thinking through, you know, share that with Tracy and and Steve or other board members, if there are other things that you think would be helpful for us to to consider. A great, great suggestion. Thank you for that feedback.
Yeah, I think as I'm trying to find the words, I want to say, I think we've had some discussions about things that maybe aren't currently funded that I want to figure out where in this conversation do we have that discussion? And so that's also still very vague, but for the sake of this meeting, I will just keep it vague at that.
Well, I mean, and you bring up some a great, you know, because for instance, you know, we're going to be putting faces, positions at all the, was it all the high schools and middle schools, right? And so that that's got to come from somewhere within the budget since I don't think we'll be able to use the at-risk dollars anymore. So there's a lot of moving parts to all this that we're going to have to work through in the budget. So all those different variables, as you mentioned. Thanks, Ms. Russell. Okay, if there no other questions or thoughts, comments on that from board members, anything else, Mr. Lilly, Ms. Kaiser, that maybe we didn't ask that you want to share?
No, I, I think we've got some, some direction moving forward.
Perfect. Okay. So just a quick recap on where we are. Budget item A. We will have all of those forums in board docs for the board to review, no, later than next Friday, the October 25th. And then staff will work through a budget, kind of a master budget timeline for the board to review. And I don't know when you all might be able to get something together for us. Definitely for us to review, I think, at the next budget meeting would be helpful. So so speaking of the next budget meeting, board, it is scheduled for November 15th, Friday, November 15th. However, that is the same weekend, and that's a day for the KASB. However, that is the same, uh, weekend and that's a day for the KASB, um, conference, which several of, of our board members and some staff will be attending. Um, so I would like to, in, in conversation with, uh, some other board members and, and Dr. Stubblefield, we'd like to request if the board would be willing to consider moving that, um, that scheduled date from the 15th, Friday, November 15th to Friday, November 22nd, same time, 1:00 PM. Um, but since several of us may be out at the conference, um, we may not have the quorum to have a meeting. So wanted to bring that up now. Um, if folks are okay with that, we can kind of give consensus to, to do that. Um, Mr. Mylan?
Move it to the, move it to the 22nd. Thank you. That's me.
Ms. Clark?
That works for me.
Okay. Ms. Brownlee Page, do you have a, um?
No, the 22nd is good. Yes.
Okay. Ms. Drew, thank you. Okay. Um, so Ms. Smith, if you could go ahead and, and send that calendar invite. Uh, I don't think that meeting is noticed yet. So, uh, just make note of that so that we notice the correct date and, and send a calendar invite to the board for the corrected date. And any staff that, uh, the staff that need to attend. Okay. Perfect. Thank you, Board. Um, well, on my end, that's all that we had on our agenda regarding the budget conversation for today. Any final thoughts or any, any questions that maybe we didn't touch on regarding the budget? Um, it's top of mind for folks. All right. If not, we will give you 40 minutes of your time back today. Enjoy your Friday afternoon, everybody. Make sure you get outside.
I think that's the first time you ever gave us time back. Woo, look at us.
Let's keep it going that way. All right. We're going to do that Tuesday as well.
You lied. Don't be a liar.
Speaking of Tuesday, Board, don't forget, we are meeting at four o'clock on Tuesday, um, to complete the rest of our retreat items. So we'll be there in person at four o'clock, uh, and then our regularly scheduled meeting will start at five. So, um, with that, uh, enjoy the weekend, everybody. Um, get out to the third Friday Art Walk if you can. It's, uh, the last one of the, of the, the, the season and, uh, have a great weekend. This meeting is very.
Bye, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.